Please, we'll ask for the pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Thank you very much. May I call the roll, please?
Councilmembers Leaks May.
Here.
Martin.
Here.
Pollock.
Here.
Mayor Protim Piana.
Here.
And Mayor Coulter.
Here, thank you, and we have a quorum this evening. The next item of business would be the approval of the agenda.
Your honor, I'd like to add another presentation. C.C. Grant is here from the RTA with information on the campaign for this November.
All right, excellent. We'll add that as Presentation C. Any other comments or discussion on the agenda?
I move to accept the agenda as amended.
Support. Moved by Martin, supported by Pollock. Further discussion?
I'm sorry, Councilwoman Leaks May reminded me we should add probably our county commissioners here as well.
Oh, yes, of course. She brought the RTA director, yes, all right. Thank you. All right. We'll consider that a friendly amendment, sir councilman? Thank you. All right, any discussion on the agenda? Marnie, would you call the roll?
Councilmembers Martin.
Yes.
Pollock.
Yes.
Piana.
Yes.
Leaks May.
Yes.
And Mayor Coulter.
Yes, thank you, the agenda is adopted. Moving on now to call to audience, which is a little different than we've normally done, and you'll find out why when we get to regular agenda, but we've moved this so that call to audience is now earlier in the agenda, before public hearings, so that if there's anyone here from the public that would like to address council, because sometimes we do have multiple public hearings and they can go on for a while, we want to give our residents an opportunity to address us and then get back to any business they might have. So, this is now our time for call to audience. So, give us your name, your address, and three minutes is yours to speak about whatever you'd like. Sir?
My name is Joe Katic, 581 Allen.
Yes, sir.
I'm here to discuss a problem with blight I've got in the next-door neighbor at 573, Allen. I talked with your code enforcers, I'm not sure what the whole process is, whether they can decide whether they can just go in and clean this up, or whether it has to go to court. Anyway, I've got some handouts with some pictures I'd like to pass out, so.
Please do, come on up and you can give them to Marnie, if you don't mind, yep.
My wife obtained this property from her brother who died a little over a year ago. We moved in, trying to decide whether we wanted to fix the property, keep it, or sell it, or just what we wanted to do, but one of the first things we noticed was the yard next door is completely loaded with junk. The pictures I took on the back of that show what it's like, once taken from the back bedroom, once from the upstairs bedroom. I've been talking with the guy that lives here, he lives here now, but primarily it's his parents' house, they're older people, he lives someplace else, but he accumulated this stuff, and about two or three months ago, he was required to move from his other place, and whatever he had accumulated there, he brought into the yard along with it. I've done everything I can to try and get him to do it, he was gonna take it out, he's gonna remove it, he was gonna sell and go up north and take all this junk with him, that hasn't happened, and I'm wit my wits' end, I even, we've got the property on the market, I even offered to pay, help pay for dumpsters, to come in and clean it up, and he hasn't responded to that. Looking at your code, it says basically when they process it, they can go out and put a tag on it, after I guess they give them a period of time to do something, and then if not, then the city workers will come in and clean it out by the next day. But, I'm not sure, is that the way it works, or do we have to go through court with this? Because I don't think it's gonna happen that quick if we're relying on him.
I know Jordan is here, are you familiar with this particular address?
Now with this address, but I can kind of speak to the process if you'd like.
Why don't you speak to the process, and then, sir, I don't know if you have an extra copy of this, but we'll give one to Jordan. Jordan is our Director of Community and Economic Development, which code enforcement falls under.
Okay.
So, he's the top guy in that area that can help you, so.
Good. Oh, thank you.
Thank you, Joe.
I talked to, I think it was Roberta about this?
Oh, great, yeah, that's one of our code enforcement inspectors. So, basically, the way this would work, counsel, is that we do have the ability to go in there and inspect and do an initial inspection, and if there are code violations, we can issue a citation, which is basically just a warning, that gives you a period of time where they will have to correct all those violations. Now, if they don't, we actually are dealing with another property that has hoarding issues that went through a lengthy process called nuisance abatement. So, if it's an issue where the violation persists, and it's something that's not easy to correct, one thing we will do as a team is we'll try to identify barriers, if there's income issues, if there's other sort of health-related issues or disabilities, we try to find solutions, like Oakland County actually has resources that they can provide, and when those steps fail, we don't go straight to the hammer, if you will, is we try to find resources, we try to eliminate barriers to code compliance, because our focus is really about getting compliance, not necessarily focusing on punishment, but when those sort of softer touches fail, we do have the nuisance abatement process, which involves court hearings, you have to establish evidence, you kind of go through a process, and I think the one that we're looking to do right now, it took about eighteen months to get there, but that's, so, but there's due process and things that you have to give folks, there's property rights, et cetera, because our ability as code enforcement is limited to what we can do in terms of these citations, but we can definitely work with you, I'll just hand you my card, and I'm gonna take this copy if you don't mind, and then we'll follow up with you this week and kind of come over the game plan if that works.
You might want to give him your phone number as well, so I don't know that it's on here, but just to make sure he has it.
Definitely.
And through the chair, if I may, we had a hoarding discussion up here a while back, and I connected us with our county commissioner, Helene Zack, because hoarding is a health, a mental health issue, and in addition to resources, legal-wise or others, there may be mental health services that our county commissioner can connect your neighbor to if they're willing to take it, so that can be another resource brought to bear under this situation.
Well, I don't think, well, it's obviously a mental health issue, but he has no problems other than the fact that he doesn't want to give any of this stuff up.
Well, thank you, sir. Work with Jordan, and if you can't get it resolved, come back, but I think Jordan will help you out, all right? Thank you, sir. Anyone else would like to address counsel this evening? Jeannie Davis.
Hi, Jeannie Davis, President of the Seniors, and I'm wearing my senior hat tonight, and I want to make sure that everybody's aware that our mayor, Dave Coulter, will be speaking to the seniors this Wednesday, October 12th, at the Kulik Center at 11:00 a.m. It's a yearly event that we do, we call it the Mayor Town Hall Meeting. Everybody's welcome, it's free, you don't have to be a senior, and I think I said it's 11:00 a.m. So, there's always, there's always a Q and A and session afterwards, so it's lively.
And even if the speech isn't any good, there's candy, because it's close to Halloween, right?
Yes, indeed, there's generally chocolates and candy, yes. The other thing I want to announce is on October 18th, which I think is a Tuesday, it's a Tuesday, the REC Center is doing the spaghetti dinner, and this is another yearly event, and we generally have the entire council comes. The prices are $10 for adults, seven for seniors, and five for kids. And again, this is at the Kulik Center, and it's from 5:00 to 7:00. And this is, as you know, it's a very popular event, people come and they're ready to leave, and then more people come and they wind up visiting until we have to throw them out. But, we're also adding this year a new twist, because you know how us little old ladies love to make cookies, so we'll be having a bake sale during that, so you can either eat your dessert there, or you can take it home. So, please come to that and enjoy.
Thank you, Jeannie, appreciate it. See you on Wednesday. Anyone else like to address counsel this evening? All right, seeing none, we'll move on now to the public hearing. Public hearing is on 1450 Jarvis for an exemption certificate, and who's introducing that?
The presentations.
Through the chair, the presentations.
Oh, I skipped presentations, oh! I skipped them for the call to audience too, didn't I? Nobody's got my back up here. Okay, I went right past, I sure did. All right, we have some presentations this evening, pardon me. That call to audience came really quick.
I did.
Item A is the Friends of the Library Week proclamation. Is there anyone here from the Friends of the Library? We have a very active and robust Friends of the Library group, not that they made it out this evening, but we still have a proclamation for them that I would like to read, so let me do that. The Friends of the Ferndale Library understand the critical importance of well-funded libraries and advocate to ensure that our library gets the resources it needs to.
There they are.
Oh, there they are.
You're up.
I just started reading your proclamation, why don't you, why don't you step forward?
No, you're up.
Yeah, come on up.
I think everyone should, that's from the Friends.
Yeah, I would agree. So, I'll finish reading this, and then I'll give you guys an opportunity to talk about the Friends, how about that? All right. So, "The Friends of the Ferndale Library understand the critical importance of well-funded libraries and advocate to ensure that our library gets the resources it needs to provide a wide variety of services to all ages, including access to print and electronic materials, along with expert assistance in research, readers' advisory, and children's services. The Friends' gift of their time and commitment to the library sets an example for all in how volunteerism leads to positive civic engagement and betterment of our community. Now therefore be it resolved that Mayor Dave Coulter proclaims October 16th to the 22nd, 2016, as Friends of Libraries Week in Ferndale, Michigan, and urges everyone to join the Friends of the Ferndale Library and thank them for all they do to make our library and community so much better." So, is someone gonna speak for the group?
Yes.
Yeah.
Well, on behalf of the Friends, we'd just like to say thank you very much, it means a lot to us that you're acknowledging how fantastic our library is, and we work really hard to try to support them. For anyone who doesn't know, the Friends of the Ferndale Library, our mission is to help support the library financially, to help them, support them in the programs that they run, and all the little purchases that they do need help with throughout the year. So, programs like the Ferndale Reads Program, which is, you know, where once a year, pretty much the whole city reads one book together, and the library hands out those books free of charge to anyone who wants to participate, and puts together programming regarding the book. It's a great community event to get everybody reading together. And a new one, one that's just recently been reinstated, just this past week, was the First Step Fridays, where at the library you can come see some amazing bands for free on a Friday night, it's kind of early on a Friday night, to just kick off your weekend before you go on to whatever other plans you might have. It was a great show this last weekend, and if you want, you can check out online, because they were streaming it live on the websites, on Facebook. So, on behalf of the Friends of the Library, thank you so much, and keep coming down to the library, because they've got, the great people that work there have a lot of great things going on right now.
So, if somebody wanted to join the Friends, how would they do so?
It is incredibly affordable, it is. $20, it covers your whole family for the whole year, seniors and students, the cost is $10. Great way to support your community and your library, of course, but the best reason to join the Friends is we have an annual member appreciation event, and if you have an active membership, you get invited, and it is the best party of the whole year. Just this, this year, it was, the theme was Midnight in the Garden of Good and Evil, and we did it at night, outside in the courtyard, right outside the library. The courtyard was transformed into this magical savanna-esque garden with statuary and Spanish moss hanging from everything, and Valentine Vodka made handcrafted special cocktails for the event, House Bayou did a buffet of Cajun food for everyone, there was a DJ spinning music all night. These are the events that you want to come to, and there's gonna be a great one next year, we're already planning it, you want to make sure you have an active membership and time to come to our big party.
Excellent. So, let me present this to you, why don't you all come up, unless someone else has something to say? Add, go ahead.
Just to join, just go to their website, it's FerndaleFriends.org, and it's very easy to sign up and pay online, and it is affordable, as Kate said. And, thank you all, thank you, Mayor and Council.
No, come on, we gotta come up, we have a call to.
Yeah.
What's up, Robert? I'm here.
All right.
You're actually unable to attend tonight.
And you did tell me that, I'm sorry, yep, so we don't have a presentation from the schools, but we do have, our next presentation is C.C. Grant from the Regional Transit Authority, to tell us about a very important issue that is on the ballot.
Hi, everyone. My name is C.C. Grant, and I'm the Oakland County Coordinator for Citizens for Connecting Our Community. We're actually, the ballot committee formed to pass the RTA. Just a little bit about me really quickly, I've been in DC working on national transportation policy for the past seven years. I'm so happy to be home, I've lived in southeast Oakland County for about a decade before moving to DC, and so I'm really excited to be here for this, I think it's a momentum occasion, because I'm a transportation aficionado. We, to be working on this ballot initiative that I believe is going to completely change the face of southeast, southeast Michigan, how we live, play, work, and move. First of all, I want to thank City Council for just giving me a few minutes, I promise I'll be brief, but most of all, I would like to thank Mayor Dave Coulter and Mayor Protim Melanie Piana for your years, years, years of hard work and leadership on transportation and corridor development, you know, over the years. I think without leaders and champions like you, we would not be here, voting to bring mass transit to southeast Michigan. So, thank you very much. As most of you know, Metro Detroit is the only major city in the entire country without a regional mass transit system. We are dead last in funding for our transit. Cities, similar-sized cities like Cleveland and Atlanta, they, they fund their transit systems by more than twice what we fund here. So, the ballot initiative that we are voting on this November the 8th will, is a very conservative but effective plan. It will move us from being dead last in funding to second last in funding. So, it's, and so, we want to make sure that we know that this is a framework, and then as time and ridership increases, more and more services can be offered, but we have to start with a fiscally constrained model. So, you know, essentially, we have a lack of transit service because we've had a lack of transit funding, and currently, according to SimCog, 92% of jobs in southeast Michigan, 92% cannot be reached in an hour on mass transit, on the public transit system we have now. This lack of investment has made it harder for people to get where they need to go. It's harder for people to get jobs, especially in exurban, in out, in opt-out communities, and we've been hearing more that it's hard for employers to get qualified employees, especially entry-level employees, because one of the first things they ask you on the application is, do you have access to reliable transportation? And if you check no, they don't want to hire you, because as you know, if you're an employer, you want your employees to be there every day on time. So, we have a chicken and the egg, you know, you can't get a job without transportation, and they won't give you, and it's hard to afford transportation if you don't have a job. So, it's really made it harder for people who are unemployed, or people who are underemployed, to kind of get their feet, you know, under themselves, and move up and become financially stable. So, you know, why should we basically prioritize bringing mass transit to southeast Michigan? You know, number one, it's a, it's an economic issue. This plan will, will, is a $4.6 billion plan over a 20-year period, that is, that will connect all four counties in our region, Wayne, Oakland, McComb, and Washtenaw County, with rapid, reliable, regional transit service. We have three main corridors that will be served with BRT, Bus Rapid Transit, Woodward Corridor from Detroit all the way out to Pontiac, BRT service from, along Grasset, out to Mount Clemens, along Michigan Avenue, out to the airport, yes, we will finally have mass transit to the airport, we're so excited. And then we'll have a commuter rail linking the downtown, midtown area to Ann Arbor. So, for those who either go to U of M, to the games, or your children are going to the games, we have an option for them to get back and forth to school without the commute down I-94. So, it's an economic issue, thousands of people who want to work and are willing to work need access to better transit to take care of their families. It's also, this plan will increase funding for seniors and people with disabilities by 33% to improve critical mobility services across all four counties in our region. Just yesterday, I was out in Pontiac, and we had a, we had a, a meeting with senior citizens, and they were saying, you know, I can't get to my doctor, because even the senior transit service that's available, if your doctor is in an opt-out community, or if your doctor's office isn't three-quarters of a mile from a bus stop, the senior, senior transit service won't even take you there. So, we have a lot of seniors who are having hardship because they can't get where they need to go. The last thing is, you know, why we should vote for this, is because transportation, trans, public transit is much more affordable than driving. Even for those who are lucky enough to have a car, the cost of maintaining a car, ensuring the car, gas and repairs, if you take transit only a couple of times a month, you know, just occasionally if you want to go downtown and don't want to pay to park, go to the airport, or just bad weather, and you decide that you don't want to take the risk in damaging your vehicle, just taking transit occasionally more than makes up what you pay for it in this millage. So, those are all the reasons why this regional transit plan is so important, highlights once again, it will help real people, seniors, people with disabilities, employees, and the employers, and students who struggle every day to get where they need to go. All four counties will benefit, this plan has something for everyone, from the M-59 Corridor to the commuter rail going all the way out to Ann Arbor. One single seamless regional transit system will, will support 67,000 jobs over the next 20 years, these are full-time and temporary positions, adding $6 billion in gross regional product to southeast Michigan, and support an increase in personal income of $4.4 billion. The master plan will also help better connect the region's 4 million people with 23 colleges and universities, 310 K-12 schools, 22 hospitals, 100 grocery stores, 410 parks, and 47 libraries, the library people are gone, I thought they would like that. And so, you know, for all of these reasons, you know, economic, moral, and social, I'm asking everyone for their support this November the 8th, thank you so much for your time.
Thank you, thanks for coming out, appreciate it. All right, and County Commissioner Zack?
Well, I think C.C.'s hiring me to be her campaign manager, and there are these signs available, if businesses or places want to post them, she's going to leave a group of signs, so we hope that we can have this whole downtown Ferndale covered with Vote RTA. Okay, so, leave them.
Excellent. You can leave them with Marnie?
Marnie, that would be great, thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
So, I'm, I've been tagged, I've been at so many different meetings talking about regional transit today and being tagged, and obviously, it's an issue that's near and dear to me and others in the room. So, I do want to tell you that we voted on a new open data policy for Oakland County, and previously, we've tried to be transparent with financials, but this is an even broader policy to be posting things online, and we're still in the process of implementing it, but it will allow people to do searches on a lot more information. One of the things that I really, that I asked for, you know, as we were in hearings, I'd love to see restaurant inspections online, and so we're exploring that issue so that that's totally transparent, there's pros and cons, and our Health Department is talking to other communities across the country about who does it, why, how. We're also long overdue, in the process, finally, it's been taking well over a year to create an Oakland County Pace District, make Oakland County, and this is a funding mechanism for community, for businesses, communities, to apply for special funding mechanism to help cover the cost overruns for energy efficiency, and it's been something that we've been championing, negotiating, it's finally going through the committee structure, so, to be continued, I will let us know, let you know. Parks continues to be an issue, there will be a Parks Millage in 2018. I continue to carry Mayor Coulter's voice, trying to advocate for more parks in this end of town, more investment, we are still not getting our fair share, I could not be more loud and clear, there was some negotiation between the parks with the city of Royal Oak, you know, in the golf course, and I was hoping that they were gonna do some type of collaborative project between the county and the city, it's not happening for, really, I think, more of the county side, and I was hoping to have a real county dog park there, instead of a pretend one at Red Oaks. So, needless, oh, I've gotten complaints about how we basically have a parking lot for dogs in the south end of Oakland County, you're making a face, but it's true, I saw this resident of mine took pictures of beautiful dog parks as he was driving to Florida, and showed me what we have at Red Oaks, and it's pitiful. So, I'm trying to champion that issue. Finally, there is an initiative through Homeland Security and other public safety to urge citizens to come forward and let our public safety know when there's unusual circumstances, things happening in our communities, the tagline is, "Don't wait, communicate," so that we can, you know, use this as a prevention opportunity to keep our communities safe. So, thank you.
Excellent, thank you, thank you. All right, we've already done call to audience, so we'll move on now to public hearing, and this public hearing is for property at 1450 Jarvis, for a Jarvis exemption certificate hearing. And Jordan, are you gonna introduce that item before we do the public hearing? Thanks.
Hey, everybody, so, you should have a packet in front of you that has kind of a briefing, but just for the public hearing purposes, I'll just kind of give the Cliff Notes of it. So, this Oprah Obsolete Property Rehabilitation Act is all about incentives for rehabilitating functionally obsolete property, industrial properties, and what it is, is a tax abatement, which is given for up to 12 years, and so what we're looking at here, the way this process works is you first establish a district, which basically is a geography that has a property in it that would be eligible for the incentive. In July, this council established a district for the 1450 Jarvis property, which is at Jarvis and Wanda, near Bee Nectar Meadery, down the street from Brass Aluminum Forging and Gage Products, over there on Wanda, sort of in that district. And so, essentially, the step before you today is to approve the exemption certificate, so it's the next piece of the pie that allows this incentive to go, go to place, and if you do decide to approve that today, what'll happen is then it gets submitted to the state treasury, who then gives the final approval, and then kicks it back to us to complete a form and basically make the abatement go into effect. So, and just to kind of give some quick summary of this, essentially, they are asking for a 12-year abatement, which would total $81,000, just a little bit over that, over the course of 12 years, which they're putting in about $980,000 in private investment, 20 to 35 construction jobs, 20 new permanent jobs that are being created, retaining 30 jobs, and then essentially, after the project is completed, the growth in tax revenue to the city per year is estimated at about $11,000. So, that's adding to the tax. So that's adding to the tax base, turning a functionally obsolete, blighted, vacant property into positive reuse, and so it's for, excuse me, it's for a company called All European Auto, so it's going to be office and warehouse space.
So there's the introduction of that item, and now I want to open up the public hearing. So is there anyone from the public that would like to address council on this request for an exemption certificate at 1450 Jarvis? All right. Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing, and I will ask, but don't go anywhere yet, because I'll ask council now, are there any questions or comments?
I do have a couple of questions. The tax exemption is 81,584 over 12 years. Is that equally spread out over the 12 years, so like $1,600 each year, or is it a curve? Is it graduated?
For the most part, it's, it's pretty much the same every year. I believe there are a few years where it spikes toward the end, but you're, you're looking at 6,000 to 9,000 per year, and it's sort of based on projected growth as well. So essentially, in your packet, you'll see there's sort of a table spread out over 12 years that kind of shows you, at least there should be.
I didn't see that, that's why I was...
So in your packet, it's right before Attachment D, in the PM environmental table. So I, I've got it open right now. It is, yeah, it's about, starts out at about 5,000 per year for two years, goes up to a little over 6, it hits sort of the, the last few years of it, it hits about 7,000 per year, and in the last year, it's 8,000, 81, or 8,140 in year 12. So it basically fluctuates from 57, 58 to 7,000, 8,000.
Okay. And my next question is, does this impact only the general fund, or are these exemptions impacting roads, park bonds, that kind of thing?
So it only goes for local millages. So there's an option that these exemptions can pursue, and they have to be explicit about that in the application. So you can go for local millages, which would be parks and libraries, all the different local millages, and they are also able to apply for school millages, but they're not doing that for this project.
Okay.
Other questions or comments? If not, a motion would be in order.
I'd like to move that City Council approve the attached resolution regarding the application for the obsolete property rehabilitation exemption certificate at the parcels listed below in the attached resolution.
Support.
Moved by Martin, supported by Leaks May. Any final comments or questions?
I think, I'll just say, this is a great use for this tool. It's an important property that is clearly obsolete, and it's, I think it's a, a great example of how we can use these tools to rehabilitate some of our older industrial areas, so, thank you.
Thank you.
Marnie, would you call the role, please?
Councilmembers Pollocka?
Yes.
Piana?
Yes.
Leaks May?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
And Mayor Coulter?
Yes, thank you. That item is adopted. Now moving on to the consent agenda. Consent agenda items that council considers routine and we enact in one motion unless somebody on council removes one of the agenda items to the regular agenda. So let me read that for you now. Item A is the approval of the minutes of the regular meeting held September 26, 2016. Item B is the approval of the selection of advanced lighting and sound to rehabilitate the city council chamber's broadcast system for a total cost not to exceed $40,000. Excuse me. Item C is the approval to engage Novak Consulting to facilitate a formal strategic plan for the city of Ferndale for an amount not to exceed $50,000, and to authorize the mayor to sign the service agreement with funds expended from the account as noted. Item D is the approval of ordinance number 1189 approving the Uniform Video Service Local Franchise Agreement with AT&amp;T Michigan, and to authorize the mayor and clerk to execute the Uniform Video Service Local Franchise Agreement with AT&amp;T. Item E is the approval to enter into an agreement with Blue Cross Blue Shield and RDS Services to obtain MedD data feeds, and for the mayor to sign agreements, as submitted by our director of HR. Item F is the approval to purchase a sign-making table, a sign-making table for a cost of $16,259 from Wentzco, which is in Livonia, and that the expense be charged to the account noted in the agenda. Item G is the approval to purchase two plows and an EZ dumper, and EZ dumper boxes for a total cost of $20,832 from Nat Hide Truck Equipment in Flint, Michigan, and that the expense be charged to the accounts listed in the agenda. And finally, item H is the approval of the Allied proposal of $7835 to re-laminate and upgrade the council bench, and that the DPW director be authorized to sign the proposal, expenses to be charged to the general fund capital account. Notice, we don't have our, our standard one about the bills and payroll. Do we need that one?
Yeah.
All right. I thought we did. Thank you. So, and finally, this would be item I, approval, approval of the bills and payroll as submitted by the city manager's office, subject to the review by the council finance committee. What, you want to pass that?
I support.
What is council's pleasure on the consent agenda?
Your honor, I'd like to request we move consent agenda item 7E to the regular agenda.
Consent agenda E, we will move to the regular agenda. All right. It's been supported, I mean, it's been moved by, moved by Piana?
I support it.
Oh, who made the motion? I'm sorry.
I think I did it backwards.
Yeah, we need a motion.
That's okay.
You want to make the motion?
I, I move to accept the consent agenda as presented with the changes.
I'll support.
All right. See, I've started it, it's my fault, I know. All right, it's been moved by Piana and supported by Martin. Is there any other discussion on the consent agenda other than item E?
I support it, do you know that?
That I'm now clear on. No, I just, I would just briefly address item B. I appreciate staff bringing this forward. We have had a number of hiccups and difficulties over the last few years in terms of our audio and lighting, frankly, around broadcasting of our council meetings, in part because the equipment is just so darn old, and so is this council chamber, which is why we're doing some refreshing here. So hopefully, and I will ask the question of what, what we think the timeframe is, but hopefully, in the not-too-distant future, with the good help of our, of our friends from Advanced Lighting and Sound, we will be upgrading the, the equipment around our cable so that we won't have some of those glitches anymore. And Joe, do you want to just speak briefly about what the timeframe is for that?
Yeah, Mayor, as you mentioned, we're doing several projects to rehabilitate the council chamber, so we're going to be coordinating with the DPW and some of the, another project that is actually just approved, and that is a consent agenda. But our goal would be to have this completed by the end of December, going into the new year.
Excellent.
With everything else, so. We do have a member of Advanced Lighting, if you have any questions.
Questions about a process, did we bid this out, or how did we?
We bid this out, yeah.
No, one comment, which I'm sure I, I saw was in the bid pack, but one of the things that has been so odd in addition to the audio issues is the lighting in here. We always look like we're in the dark, the speaker usually looks like they're in the dark, so I know it's part of what you're working on, but if you can just pay extra attention to how this is going to look for the folks at home, which is really what this is for.
All right. You want to look pretty.
I don't think $40,000 is going to do that, but...
Thank you for accepting that. My name's Sean Watts from Advanced Lighting and Sound. The process of that is what we're looking to do, is there would be lights placed within the ceiling tiles with that, so it's not a matter of having lights coming down and being disruptive to the aesthetics of, of the room. That, the plan is that everybody will be equally lit. You know, right now, you're having lights coming down over top of you, and everybody's face, for the most part, has a little bit of shadow, so it'll be front lighting on that. Probably the closest way, if you go into the city of Birmingham, if you've ever been in their council chamber, they have the same lights that are going to be installed in here, as recently, we also did the city of Farmington, and they have similar lights of what we're going to put in there. Very soft lights, a little bit more directional. You're going to have to get a little bit used to having a little bit more light on you, but it will help enhance the whole video aspect, and you know, what your people at home will see over the cable channels as well.
Through the chair, will it be appreciably warmer up here?
No. They are fluorescent lights. No, no hotter than what you've got there. There will be some, probably some reconfiguration of what, where the lights are there, you know, also in for the projector as well, to make sure that that image is, you know, is better and easier to, to read.
Good. Yes.
I thought there was going to be something done about this projection screen. Were we doing something else with the projection screen, so that we're not always?
Yeah, part of the bid pack, you actually included the overhauling of the display. That's going to be a matter of design, so we'll be working with council, keeping you updated on some of the design concepts for redis displaying that, but that's in the budget, too.
Good. Thank you. Good. Well, we look forward to working with you. Appreciate it. Thank you.
We appreciate it. I expect it to look skinnier. Thank you.
Amen. Guys have high expectations.
Ouch! Ouch!
I just hope I don't sweat like Michael Lennon.
I remember on Dynasty, they used to sort of fuzzy you out when you got older, maybe. If you get that filter, that would be great. All right. Further comments or questions on the consent agenda? If not, Marnie, would you call the role, please?
Councilmembers Piana?
Yes.
Leaks May?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Pollocka?
Yes.
And Mayor Coulter?
Yes, thank you. The consent agenda is adopted. Moving on now to the regular agenda. Agenda item A is a consideration to appoint Whitney Lemelin to the Parks and Recreation Advisory Committee.
That was actually...
Except that was pulled. I have an old, I have a really old agenda, don't I?
I guess you do. I'm not sure why that is.
Because that is not...
Here, would you like to look at my 21st century piece of paper?
Ouch! All right, our first agenda item would be the consideration of reimbursement agreement for Axel Brewing's brownfield plan.
I'm on fire tonight. I don't know what's going on. It's been a long day.
Totally. Yeah, Jordan, thank you.
Everybody, long time no see.
Yep.
So, just to give you a quick overview, because this isn't the first time this item's been before you, we do also have representatives in the audience from Axel Brewing and their environmental consultant, if there are technical questions about the nature of the project.
Aren't we fun?
I just, I just figured I'd ask you.
You think we've been drinking at Axel Brewing the way we're acting out?
The fun is about to begin. So, just a quick recap of where we're at with this project. So, obviously, a really great investment, another great example of the power of our incentives. This is one of the first that our incentives committee got a chance to take a look at in terms of being able to put conditions into the agreement. And so, just to quickly summarize those conditions, a cap on the length of reimbursement term, so 20 years if they do get approval from the Michigan Strategic Fund for school tax capture, and 28 years if they do not get that approval. Strict submittal requirements and timelines related to reimbursement eligibility, and one condition that was talked about was this prohibition against property tax appeals throughout the duration of the agreement. And so, what ended up happening is working out between our legal team, Dan over there, and, and the attorney for Axel Brewing, we reached sort of a compromised position that sort of met the, the intent of the incentives committee, which was essentially to prevent double-dipping on incentives, so that you get this, you know, you get this tax break, and then you go get a property tax appeal. But we also wanted to preserve their legal right to a tax appeal. So, you know, you get, they always talk about the, the hypothetical of the rogue assessor, but I've never met one before, but that being said, sort of preserving the legal right was really important, but essentially where we landed was, if they were to get some sort of tax appeal, the B.R.A. would have the latitude, and Dan, you know, rein me in if I say this incorrectly, but the B.R.A. would have the latitude to offset that deduction in their taxes in future payouts, and be reimbursed if they overpaid. So essentially, it would come out in the wash. So that's, that's basically where this is at. It's a really exciting project, and for those who aren't familiar, it's on the west side of Livernoy, between Marshall and Fielding, a walking distance from the Cat Cafe. So it's in a really great location that, that's booming for the city. I don't think they intend to serve cats, but we can find that out. But this is a really great transformation of another derelict space in a really booming area of town. It's a really great use, contributes to the walkability environment, substantial investment, and I can kind of go into those details. It's almost $3 million that they're putting in, it's a really, really great project. So, that being said, that's what's before you today.
Excellent. Excellent. Are there questions or questions of council?
I think this is the end of a long series of discussion approvals and vetting this whole process, so that this new business can actually open.
I support the planning commission was very thorough, and this whole project as a whole, and so I think this is a nice addition to the area, once all is settled.
I, I have a couple of questions, just so that publicly we...
She'd like me to make a motion?
Oh, if you don't mind.
Yes, please.
I move that the city council approve the reimbursement agreement for Axel Brewing's brownfield plan.
Support.
All right. Moved by Piana, supported by Martin. Now, comments?
Questions, actually.
Questions, Drew?
So just for clarity, this is different than the Oprah that we just supported for the Jarvis building, in that that was taxes being exempt for 12 years. This is providing basically a lump sum of $226,000 to support their redevelopment of the project. That's going to be paid back over 20 years.
Well, actually, essentially how that works, it's close, close but no cigar, but essentially, what it is, is it's actually a TIF payment. So what will happen is, they're making the investment, as, as, when I say they, the developer is making the investment in the property for this environmental remediation, and you'll see in the agreement, we enumerate some eligible costs that they can, they can resubmit for reimbursement. So they make the upfront investment, and essentially, they get repaid off of the increase in value to the property. So you'll, there'll be what they call a, a TIF table, Tax Increment Finance Table, in your, in your packet, that kind of lays out over the course of that 20 to 28 years, kind of accounting for both potential scenarios, because they now go to the state and seek approval for school tax capture. The state oversees that. So essentially, they get repaid over this period of years for the investment that they made, off of the growth. So essentially, you know, they establish a base value for that property after the improvements are made, and then, so you go through this TIF table over these years, and based on that increase, that's where the money comes from. So it's actually just being paid back from the growth that their investment caused.
Okay. And because of that, a lot of this, I just want to get clarity for a lot of people that, you know, listening at home. And because of that, we are not putting out an investment into this property, so that if, let's say, eight years, for whatever reason, this business were to fold, the city really hasn't lost out on any money that we've invested in that property, or that they've gained because of this agreement.
That would be correct on this project. We're, we're not investing anything upfront.
Through the chair, councilman, the city's not forwarding or providing any money upfront.
Yes.
It's only for the eligible activities that the developer does undertake that they will submit a request to the, to the city and to the city's B.R.A., Brownfield Authority, for reimbursement of that increment, that tax increment that's captured. So you're, you're correct.
Okay. Thank you. Thanks.
Other questions, comments? All right. Marnie, would you call the role, please?
Councilmembers Leaks May?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Pollocka?
Yes.
Piana?
Yes.
And Mayor Coulter?
Yes, thank you. That item is adopted. All right. Go forth and brew.
January.
January, all right. Counsel rules next? All right. The next item would be the consideration to provide notice of revision number seven to council rules of procedure to amend section two, meeting procedure to order of business to place call to audience before public hearings. This is what I referred to earlier, although I didn't do it correctly, and that was very simply, this came up at a few council meetings ago, that we, we make folks wait until after public hearings until we have a call to audience, and it just seemed more expeditious and more convenient for our residents to be able to, to speak earlier in the meeting. So this is going to formally amend our council rules of procedure. Now, this is a, a consideration to provide notice. Do we have to take this up again, Dan?
Through the chair, Mayor, your current rules of procedure provide that you can make a change on a one-time basis, like you did this evening, but for a permanent rule change, you have to give notice the meeting before. So this will be on your October 24th for a permanent change of your rules of procedure as it relates to the agenda order.
Excellent. Thank you. So, is there any discussion about that?
Just want to add a point of clarity. In the recommended action, it says call the audience after presentations, which is before public hearing, but it's not actually in the actions here that we're approving. So that's what it says here, that the changed agenda order to place call to audience after presentations, is that the order of we wanted?
I believe so, because that order is spelled out, correct? So it's presenting, currently, it's presentations, then public hearing, then call to audience.
It's actually, it's presentation, call to audience, public hearing.
That's what we're moving it to.
Yeah, right now, it's presentations, public hearings, call to audience.
Okay.
So it would follow presentations.
Okay, I get it. Sorry. So we changed the agenda tonight before we actually changed the-
Because he said we could do it once, without changing the rules, right?
Oh, my God.
And the mayor changed it again.
It'll be the most complicated thing we do tonight. All right, any, any discussion? A, a motion would be in order, uh-
Well, you, you, actually, it's just notice tonight, so there is no action.
There's no action because this is just a notice.
You'll take, you'll take action, uh, at the next council meeting.
You are, you are on notice.
All right, well, I'll still make the motion if you want me to, cause it's to provide notice.
No, we don't need, we don't need a motion, apparently. Dan is shaking his head no.
Okay.
Yeah.
I'm good with it.
You're on notice.
Now, is the next agenda gonna be the old format or the new format that we're proposing it for?
It will let you know.
I don't want to confuse.
Stay tuned.
This is more complex than the Brownfield. You're so mean.
I told ya.
Let's just be surprised.
Stay tuned. You'll find, yes.
We'll figure it out.
We'll figure it out. Uh, all right, the next, uh, item I believe is a consideration of a Pierce Fire Pumper Agreement. Would that be correct? All right. Uh, and chief, are you gonna address that issue?
Yes.
And maybe the next couple, or are they?
Three of them.
The next three, actually. We could talk it as one, or do we need, and, and, no, we need to, okay.
No, you, you can talk as one. You just have to press up.
Well, as council is where you approve the purchase of a Pierce fire truck, in order to do that, we need an agreement with both Pierce, and we're gonna finance it, so we need an agreement following with P N C. And they need a resolution in order for us to have an agreement. So, after quite a bit of going back and forth between Pierce, Oshkosh, attorney Chris was able to iron out, um, even though it seemed to us pretty simple and straightforward, the Oshkosh lawyer seemed to be hung up on part five. And we eventually got to, uh, language that, um, we both could accept. So, before you is the agreement as approved by Dan Crist after going back and forth with Pierce, Oshkosh. And, uh, we are asking for your approval of the agreement to purchase the Pierce Puck Pumper, and that'll put the order in, so it will take 10 months to build this truck from the state forward, uh, providing you approve it.
And Dan, anything to add in terms of the agreement?
Through the chair, no. The, the form of the proposed purchase contract is, is approved as to form for your consideration. Uh, there, as the chief indicated, there were, uh, a few, uh, issues that needed to be resolved, and they have been resolved.
Okay. Good. And I, I would just say for the sake of folks at home, we did discuss this already. So if this, if this seems like deja vu, we did discuss it, council approved the purchase of this. But we have a relatively new policy that any agreement or contract that's over $100,000, we're just gonna put them on the regular agenda just to double, double check them, be totally transparent about major purchases. And so that really is why this is here, although we've had this discussion.
Yes, sir.
Yep. But a motion would be in order.
I'd like to move to accept the purchase agreement with Pierce Manufacturing, reviewed and approved by the city attorney Daniel Chris, submitted by chief Sullivan.
Support.
Moved by Martin, uh, Martin and supported by Pollocka. Any further discussion or questions?
Um, just, uh, it's, the warranty period is one year. Is that typical, or are we, or is there more than one year? Cars usually have more than one year, so I was wondering.
Uh, no, that's, that's typical, um, with, uh, fire trucks, cause they're custom built. But, um, we typically don't have any problems with them, and they are very responsive. Like, um, I don't know if you remember the platform, councilwoman, but we did have a, a break in that with $70,000 repair. We had no hassles whatsoever. They sent experts out and took care of it all within the first year. That's another reason we kind of try and beat them up in the first year to make sure there's nothing really wrong with it. We'll do a lot of, uh, testing on the hydraulics and, uh, um, pumping and braking systems and that. We'll run it hard on a course and make sure that it is all performing well within that first month of acceptance. In fact, in the back of the contract, there is an attachment, uh, talking about, um, uh, acceptance. It's an acceptance thing I'll sign. Once we approve, uh, the acceptance of it, uh, we'll test it and then we'll sign off that we agree everything's in, in functional order. Then we have one year warranty from that point forward.
Thank you.
Yep. All right, Marnie, would you call the roll, please?
Councilmembers Pollocka?
Yes.
Piana?
Yes.
Leaks May?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
And Mayor Coulter?
Yes, uh, that item is adopted. Uh, the next item is the consideration of the master lease purchase agreement now between the city of Ferndale and P N C Finance on the same vehicle, correct?
Yes, sir. And this was, uh, actually all done within, um, almost a week after council approved the original purchase of it. Uh, P N C had everything, uh, lined up and were kept contacting me going, uh, when are we gonna get an agreement, when are we gonna get an agreement? So it was Pierce that was actually slowing us down on that. Uh, this is the agreement as set forth, um, with Cheryl. We talked about, um, uh, April and I about, uh, first payment within the first year. So we had them roll that in so that it starts out this first year, we'll be making our first payment, and it'll be five years down the road. And, uh, P N C's all set to do all that. The only thing they need is the next, uh, thing we need you to approve is the resolution that makes their, um, staff feel all warm and fuzzy, apparently, so.
All right, a motion would be in order.
I move to approve the master lease purchase agreement between the city of Ferndale and P N C Finance LLC, submitted by chief Sullivan.
Support.
Moved by Pollocka, supported by Leaks May. Any questions or comments? Marnie?
Councilmembers Piana?
Yes.
Leaks May?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Pollocka?
Yes.
And Mayor Coulter?
Yes, thank you. And finally, the consideration to adopt a resolution for P N C Equipment Finance Agreement.
And that's our final piece. Again, through, uh, Dan Crist, he looked everything over. Uh, they wanted a resolution in which, uh, these things were stated, um, so that we're all on the same page, apparently, according to the P N C representative. And I said that wouldn't be a problem, and they sent us the form. We went through it. And as it sits before you is the pieces of information they wanted in a resolution.
Is there a motion?
I move that we accept the resolution as presented in the packet.
Support.
Moved by Martin, supported by Pollocka. Any discussion, questions, comments? Marnie?
Councilmembers Leaks May?
Yes.
Bria! We have you this week! We have you this week.
Done, Eight Mile and Woodward. Um, resident wants to know if there's anything we can do about that, and I wanted to know if you had any advice?
For the, the, the trash and, and other debris?
Yes.
At Eight Mile?
And the spray painting, yeah.
Um, it's been a topic of discussion with staff.
Okay.
We have, um, we have limited avenues of what we can do because of private property rights. Uh, but, um, if we find that debris is obviously not private property and it's unattended, uh, you know, we notify PD first and we go in and, and do what we can.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, good, Kara, anything from community engagement department today? Yes, the beautiful newsletter.
You will not be able to miss them in the mailbox. Um, I brought copies for all of you this evening, and, uh, they turned out great, so I just wanted to let residents know that they're on their way. Uh, they have extensive information about Lloyd's, um, leaf pickup schedule for this year, so that will help. There's also an additional piece coming specifically, uh, dedicated to that information, so it doesn't get lost. Uh, we also have information about the November election, uh, trick-or-treating hours, and, uh, the new bike repair stations, among other things. So, uh, good information in here. I am aware that, uh, most residents have not received this yet. Uh, yeah, that's why I brought copies for you. Um, we already have, um, a person within the post office identified that we can meet with. And I've got people set up in all four quadrants of the city, my little newsletter task force, and everybody is tracking when they receive so that we have information to actually bring to this meeting for the first time, rather than just they're running late. So, I appreciate everybody's patience, but you'll be able to find this on Facebook and Twitter and our website tomorrow. And I will hand out copies of these for you.
Great.
Also, um, speaking about the Hilton Road closure, Matt Davis of D P W did come this morning, and we had a good talk about, um, you know, the plan. He sent me a bunch of great information, so that's gonna be on our website. It's gonna be on all of our social media accounts. And knowing that there's potential for kind of changes last minute in the schedule, we're gonna make sure that we update all of our different media with last minute information as it comes, so people should be ready for that information.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, Marnie, anything from the city clerk's office?
Yes, tomorrow is the close registration for the November 8th election. So we have been, we have a big stack of them like this to process, which is great.
Good.
But, um, we would encourage everyone to not only register, but to make sure that you know where you're registered. We find a lot of people who vote only in the presidential elections will move, because we have a lot of rentals here in Ferndale. So, people will move and they don't really realize that their registration might not be following them. So we're strongly encouraging everyone to make sure they know where they're, they're registered at. Um, Michigan.gov/vote, um, shows where everyone is registered, and we can help people get registered elsewhere, even tomorrow if they're, um, not in Ferndale and need to register elsewhere. So we have that available. And, um, absentee ballots are available at city hall now, so, um, those are also, big stacks of those coming in every day. So those are available up through, uh, November 5th here at city hall, and-
Who's winning? I'm sorry.
I don't know.
Don't joke about the sanctity of elections.
All right, I'm sorry.
And that's all. Thank you.
Thank you, Marnie. Uh, April, anything from the city manager's office?
Um, yeah, a couple, a couple of things. One is there was, uh, rumor flying around that the city is no longer going to be engaging in the quiet zones for the rail. That is not true. It, it hit social media. Um, it's a very long process. It's a hurry up and wait situation. Um, so the Federal Railroad Authority is reviewing our application. We should expect, um, some kind of answer between February and March. And our goal would be once, once that approval is there, we can begin the process of implementing and redoing some of those intersections with the goal of, by the end of summer, beginning of fall, that they are ready to go and, and we have those. So we are not stopping. It's just, there isn't anything to report because it's, uh, like I said, about a nine-month to a year process with the Federal Railroad Authority. Um, a couple of things, uh, too, I just wanted to mention on leaf pickup, um, as we're waiting for the newsletter, and she said, did say there was another pamphlet specifically dedicated to that. It's already on cable, so that people can review the schedule on cable. Of course, it'll be on our website and Facebook. And we're also doing print ads in the newspapers as well, um, Woodward, uh, the Tribune Woodward Talk and, um, 115. So that way, we're just trying to hit every dynamics that we can on this new program. So expect, you'll be able to find it everywhere. It's a very easy schedule to follow, but just know that to look for those, um, details as well.
Excellent. Thanks. Yes, Dan, anything for that?
Nothing tonight.
Is that it, April, I'm sorry?
Yeah, I'm good.
Nothing tonight, mayor.
Nothing tonight. All right, uh, councilman Martin?
Two things. One, I want to congratulate the school district on what was really a great homecoming parade. That event's grown and grown and grown over the years, and that was just a lot of fun, especially since we had a ride this year. Which I thought was terrific. And then secondly, I want to go back to C C Grant's presentation. I know, uh, we've got one more council meeting before the next election, um, and we're hit and miss about whether we want to endorse things up here. But I, I really want to voice my support for R T A. It's an economic justice issue. It's a social justice issue. I don't think it's something we should be quiet about. I appreciate all the work the mayor pro tem and Piana and Mayor Coulter's done on this. And, um, I, I think that this is a sold audience for the most part up here, but hopefully people get the message of the importance, uh, and relative impact uh, while having a seat at the table being to protect the, the character of these communities on that route. the table, being to protect the character of these communities on that route. As a whole, it's just the right thing and responsible thing to do, so I just, I want to make sure I'm clear about my support for that initiative as well.
Excellent. Thank you, sir. Councilwoman Leaks May?
First of all, I second support with RTA. Thank you for bringing that up. And also, I thought you were going to bring this up, Chief, but the premiere of the Citizens Academy was, I thought, pretty successful turnout, and I just think it's just a great way to really get the community involved, get the kind of ins and outs of what you all do every day, and I appreciate you guys hosting it. My other question is, are you still accepting applications?
I believe that Sergeant Brown had another, somebody else wanted to comment, you can squeeze him in. We had like a couple of no-shows.
Right.
So we're not squeezed for time.
Okay.
They, of course, missed the orientation one, but some of the fun stuff is coming up now, so they're exploring.
All right. Thank you.
I believe the application's still on.
So because the chief didn't have a microphone, if you were at home and you didn't hear that, yes, you could go online and still get an application for the academy, correct?
Yes.
All right. Anything else?
That's it.
Great. Councilman Pollocka?
I have a couple of things. This Friday, from 4:00 to 8:00, at Western Market is their annual Apple Fest. Free admission. It's always a fun event, lots of activities and cider tasting, and it's one of my favorite ones for Western Market. The other event, I was really surprised that the DDA wasn't here. Fido Does Ferndale comes back October 20th. That is from 5:00 to 8:00 p.m. in downtown Ferndale. I'm assuming it's going to be at the normal place, which is Planavon, Nine Mile. And last thing is, at the last council meeting, council approved the resolution recognizing the second Monday of October as Indigenous Peoples' Day, so I would like to wish the wonderful people of Ferndale a happy Indigenous Peoples' Day.
Excellent. Mayor Protem, Piana, anything this evening?
Nope. I just wanted to make sure people knew that I've supported the Regional Transportation Authority and the campaign. I'm not sure if anybody would know that or not, but...
No, I'm sure.
Anyway.
It's a gray area.
All right. All right. And I would just, I just want to talk about a couple of events that I'm going to participate in, including, as Jeannie mentioned, the seniors lunch this Wednesday at 11 o'clock. And again, you don't have to be a senior to attend that. You don't have to pay any money to attend that. You can just come on out, and I'll do sort of a mini update on what's going on at the city, and we'd love to have people out at the Kulik Center this Wednesday at 11 o'clock. And then this Saturday, at 9:00 at the high school, there's going to be a prayer breakfast. That's the first time we've tried this in conjunction with the Southeast Community Coalition. Our police department's been very involved in this, and I'll be at that as well, and so look forward to both of those events this week. With that, I would say our meeting is adjourned.